Okay, we'll go ahead and start tonight's meeting. We'll call it to order. Welcome visitors, and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I will move to approve tonight's agenda.
A second?
Thank you. Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving into the action items. First item of business is the school calendars. There was a request for this to be put on this agenda. And is this, is Ms. Darnold going to speak to them?
I will. Before I go through kind of what our recommendation is for the calendar, it is the board's statutory obligation to set the calendar, so this is a recommendation. We did have a committee with at least one representative from every school and including some classified staff. But Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, and Lakeland are in agreement as far as the superintendents that we want to try to have a unified calendar with regard to our long breaks for K-Tech and just continuity for the programs there. And then also because we have, we have parents who work in Lakeland but whose kids go to school in Post Falls or Coeur d'Alene, or we have teachers who work in Lakeland whose spouse works in Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls. So as much as possible, we were trying to be consistent. So those were the kind of, that was a big, one of the big driving factors. One of the things that Lakeland has done for several years is work to avoid three-day school weeks in our calendar because we don't get grade instruction in a three-day school week. You tend to have higher absenteeism in a three-day school week. So as we move into this time where New Year's Day starts to fall kind of in the middle of the week, it causes us to push our Christmas vacation out a little bit later. And so you'll see that in here. And then the other, the other consideration for the committee was that we have in May, on the Friday of the state tournament week, that has been a non-contract day and no kids in school for several years. And we, we started doing that even before we had this huge problem recruiting and retaining guest teachers. But even with a robust group of guest teachers, we struggled to fill positions on that Friday because we had parents who wanted to go down and see their kids participate in those spring sports. And all, in all of the spring sports, the state tournaments happen at the same time, which is a little bit different than our winter and our fall sports. So we just, it's just a non-contract day. And so we wanted to try to maintain that. But this is always a consideration when you're looking at getting to the 190 days of contracted days that teachers have, and then also the number of student contact days that we need. So that was part of the conversation this year. So the recommendation from the committee for this coming school year, the 22-23 school year, is that Christmas vacation is late. It's the latest we've ever had it. But it allows us to maintain that May. It's not a flex day, the non-contract day. And the last day of school in December, before break, will be December 23rd. So one thing I, I just want to be really transparent with the, with the board. When we surveyed the entire staff and showed them that there were two options, basically the earlier Christmas and then the later Christmas, we were pretty split, 50/50. But there were several teachers who voted for the earlier Christmas vacation who said, if Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls are going with the later, it's more important to me that we align with Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls, and I would move my vote to the later. And so knowing that, and because it was split, almost exactly 50/50, the committee agreed that we were going to recommend the later date because the other two districts, this calendar has now gone to both school boards. So they're just waiting to hear what our board wants to do. So that would be Christmas 22-23. And this is what the calendar would look like in December. So we would have this whole week, this week off and this week off. And one of the reasons, the New Year's Day is on a Sunday, which means the observed holiday is on a Tuesday, or Monday, which we could have come back on Tuesday the 3rd. But that gives us one extra day in, for Christmas vacation. So instead of 10 school days, it's now 11 school days, which would have taken away the opportunity for that May date for spring state sports. And so that was, that definitely played a part in the conversation. So that's for 22-23. And then 23-24 basically mirrors next year's. So one of the, but one of the things that's different here, I'll go here so you can see it, is so now New Year's Day is on the 1st, which would be the observance we would come back. We could still have done the normal vacation time and had the 15th be our last day, and we'd come back on the 2nd. And we still, the May date still would have worked because 2024 is leap year. So in February, we have an additional day. So, but again, when you look at the calendar for the next year, if everything moves forward, then now we have New Year's Day here, and so we would come back here, which we would never do. So what we didn't want to do for parents is we're going to have a late calendar next year, then we're going to go back to the more traditional calendar, then we're going to jump for the next two years to the later calendar. So the decision was, knowing that the next two that come after this are going to have to be the later calendar, let's just be consistent for four years and have the later, the later break. And again, this, these, this is the calendar that Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls, that went to their boards. Everything else in the calendar looks exactly the same. This was the big discussion point.
Well, I'm just curious. I know the, the concern has always been that if you go, you know, for a part week, there's not much instructional learning. The kids are gone anyway. Don't you foresee that happening anyway? Because you're, I mean, if parents are making travel plans for Christmas, most of them are not going to leave on the 23rd or the 24th of December, I would think. So you're running into the same problem that we've always been trying to prevent, is the absenteeism around the holiday. Where I don't see you having the absenteeism after January 1st, but I do see you having it before Christmas. I mean, was that even a consideration?
Yeah, we did talk about that. On, the teachers on the committee felt that if parents were going to leave early, they, they, they might not be here for Friday, but they, we didn't foresee them necessarily taking off several days this week for the Christmas vacation. The other thing that we, we did talk about that might be helpful for families is when we push our vacation out, if families did want to travel for the holidays, it actually, because we, we have been in this calendar before. It just, it's the way, it's the cycle of the calendar. And what our teachers noticed was in the years where we had the later Christmas vacation, they could travel much more cheaply because they weren't traveling during that window of between Christmas and New Year's, when things are more expensive. They could come back on the 3rd or the 4th or the 5th and have a much cheaper ticket. So it actually is less expensive for parents when we push it out if they're going to travel.
Oh, and I'm not, I'm not concerning myself.
Yeah, I, no, I, I
I get what you're saying, and I would agree that yes, you will. The farther away you are from the, from the purpose of the holiday, the less expensive, and I get that. I just know that your concern has always been expressed about people leaving before the holiday, and then we, we have all that absenteeism. And so I just thought I'd throw that out there to see if that's even been entertained.
Definitely.
Because I do believe, especially the 22-23 calendar, with the 25th being on Sunday. So.
Yep, and that was absolutely part of the conversation.
Okay.
And then, but still recognizing that it was more important that we align with Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls for K-Tech kids. And we're moving in that direction, so they wanted to stay consistent over the next four years. So those were the two big talking points. And when we did, when we've been through this cycle before and we did go later, there wasn't a big difference as far as absentee on that. There definitely was, it was higher, but it wasn't significantly higher. And it was on Friday, but not Thursday, Wednesday.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any concerns?
Any of the two districts have already kind of aligned on this plan?
How many students do we have at K-Tech?
We have, how many students? We weren't at that presentation. Colby just was, just presented at, at Chamber last week. And was it 531 or something?
Five, 10.
K-Tech has 525. Well, K-Tech has 525 spots.
Yeah.
We're asking how many are Lakelands?
I know, sad I don't know, because he didn't divide it out. He just talked about.
I believe we're around 40%, I think, but we could confirm that.
Okay.
It just, it does get challenging for our K-Tech kids. If Post Falls and Coeur d'Alene are on the same calendar, when two of the three schools are on the same calendar, K-Tech is in, is open. So if Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls are on this calendar, it would mean that either our kids miss a week of K-Tech or they're going to school for a week during their Christmas vacation. Just kind of how that all plays out.
Is our spring break aligned with NIC's?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, with the large number of dual-credit kids, that's an absolute must. It messes up our third quarter by a week because of when spring break is. And the teachers, we used to have eight, eight weeks of instruction and then spring break, and then the ninth week of the quarter would be after spring break. But they didn't feel like that was, it was really hard for any kind of continuity from the, what, the instruction that happened prior. And then we have one last week of whatever we're doing to wrap it up. So their request was, since NIC has pushed their spring break out as far as they possibly can, we now have an eight-week third quarter and a 10-week fourth quarter, which isn't that big of a deal. But their third quarter is, definitely feels shorter, even though it's only a week shorter. But yes, we're aligned with NIC. All three districts.
Is that why the spring break is a week late? Because usually it's the start of the spring season.
It's always, NIC's spring break is always the last little bit of March and the first little bit of April.
Okay.
Our teachers would love it if we could be the first full week of April, but it doesn't align with NIC. So Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls actually are getting on board, and they are doing their week of Thanksgiving like we are, where they're going to hold their conferences the way that we do to get those days, Monday and Tuesday, so that you have that whole week.
Okay.
So that will be completely the same. And then if we go with these calendars, Christmas would be the same, and then spring break would be the same. I do believe, though, dear, I do believe that the Coeur d'Alene calendar for 23-24, and I only know this because Deana Nakarado reached out to me from Post Falls, for whatever reason, they have moved their spring break. They're not going to align with NIC.
Okay.
But Post Falls and Lakeland feel that that's, that's not a great move for our kids. We have so many students in Lakeland who do dual-credit with NIC. But that's just not a good move for us. And this is the first year, I think, in Coeur d'Alene that they've had a committee help design their calendar. And Deana Nakarado in Post Falls is a committee of one. So she, she really just kind of waited to see what Coeur d'Alene and Lakeland were going to do, and then align.
Okay. So the flex days in May that you, the flex day in May that you were talking about, it's not on the calendar, correct? It's going to be put on the calendar?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on the calendar. I just, all I should, for this presentation, the big discussion point I felt for the board was the Christmas vacation, because it's different.
It's not on this calendar. But that is irrelevant. I'm just trying to remember when the state tournaments were.
Yeah, it's like May 20th.
Because it's usually around the, the holiday. Because I spent the
It's the weekend before the holiday.
Or it should be, were those calendars included in the workbook?
Yes.
Yep.
So I can pull it up.
But it doesn't show that day.
That's, no.
That day specifically.
That's one of the things I was going to change, so. Yeah, it's not on there.
Is it on the next one?
It would be this Friday, the 19th.
Okay.
And then what about the next year? Well.
That's not a selling point. I was just curious.
Yeah. I'll, I'll fix it. I'll include those.
It is on the other calendar.
Okay.
It is on the 23-24 calendar?
Yeah.
It's on the 17th.
Okay.
Do you scroll all the way up? And then you can fix it out?
Yeah, there you go. That's what I was looking for before, but I think I was moving my mouse the opposite direction.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions? No.
No.
Well, that being said, this is an action item. The recommendation is that the calendars be approved as presented. So at this time, we can entertain any motions regarding the school calendars.
I will move to approve the recommendation for the 22-23-23-24 school calendar years. A second?
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Me.
Hearing one, the motion carries. First, do you listen, was there anything else you wanted to talk about?
Well, I just don't know why we moved. I know why we did last year of doing two years at a time. I don't know why we're now picking up this pace, two years at a time. I understand the whole meaning, but I don't have enough information. I don't know anybody. I mean, all I have is a piece of paper. I have no background. I have no data that says we asked these questions and these people sent this.
Okay.
That was it.
So can I just ask a clarifying question? The intent now will be that it'll be a rolling two-year calendar, so next year we would bring the 24-25 calendar. So there's always two calendars out there, two years, which will allow parents to make travel plans well ahead of time. So when we bring the next calendar, would it be helpful? I think what I'm hearing you saying is you would like to actually see, like the survey responses.
Yeah, the feedback. Great, yeah. And for parents too. I mean, they are ultimately, I mean, it's nice to make things easy for the staff, but I mean, parents work jobs that are gone all day and all those types of things, and I don't see any input. Not that it didn't happen, but I'm not aware of it.
We can, moving forward, we can definitely make that part of your package.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item. Remember questions?
Yeah.
Next item is the math curriculum proposal. We've received the cost comparisons, which I find like, wow.
That, that's, that was what we said, that was wow. So we, oops, we did, we tried to think about what would make the most sense to the board as you're making some decisions tonight. And so we did pull out the iReady diagnostic pathways part because regardless of what program we adopt, that, that's a piece that stays. And it is part of the overall cost for iReady. So we pulled it out so that we could see what the true cost of the curriculum, of the actual curriculum adoption would be, which is why we did that. So we are right between $500,000 and $600,000, which is where we thought we would land. What is, what you should know? So the total price with this part in is this. We got a $642,000 discount from iReady. So without the discount, it's $1.3 million.
Which I think was to our moment's point last time of, you know, you go big and then it's, you tend to get a bigger discount.
But even knowing that, we asked, we didn't tell any of these other companies that we were only asking for a comparison. We just asked for the quote. So I would have anticipated that they would have done the same deep discounts. That didn't happen.
So caveat to that. I was transparent with Erika when I reached out because they asked that question, and I'm still waiting for that quote to be fit. Now that probably is why it backfired on me, but that was the first question, and I feel like I could not answer it honestly, so. So they still, and, and they are doing a revision with, everything costs more money. So the, the whole price is no longer in play. And so they said they would get back to me, and I have emailed them four times. I've left four messages, and I'm still waiting. So just to be transparent.
Yeah, and even like when you look at these other programs, you can see the discount that we got on the diagnostic pathways when we went with iReady as compared to what they would have charged us if we hadn't. And then the other thing to remember is when you're looking at illustrated math, for example, that program can be fully digital, but we heard really loud and clear from our board that we want to provide textbooks for students. And because the fully digital part could have been free, but because of the print, and then because you're going with the print, you're purchasing those, the digital license that goes with the print instead of the free version. So it's, this is just the K5, and so when you pair that with perhaps a 6-8 iReady or a 6-8 Mid-School Math.
Please scroll down. Please scroll down.
Isn't this it?
No, it is.
So it's another page.
Oh, there it is, sorry. So you could see if we combined a 5-8 program, a K5-8 program or 6-8, like, look at the cost of these programs. Was astounding. So, so I, the reason I wanted to really point that out is because we've had a lot of conversations about the need for a science textbook and moving that adoption forward. And so when we start talking about that adoption, we'll really want to talk about what amount of money are we going to set aside for that? Because it's going to be, it'll be more, I think it'll be more than what we're paying for iReady because the new science standards require actually doing science, which means you've got the textbook and the digital piece, but you also have all of the supplies that go along with student apps.
You have manipulative and investigative kit, and all those pieces.
So I anticipate it's going to be a little bit more than what we're paying for iReady.
Now, are we having to buy any digital licenses with iReady on top of?
This is all, this is our total amount for everything. Six years, we pay all of it upfront. We don't pay, the only thing we might have to pay for extra is if our enrollment goes up and we have to buy some additional textbooks for our new students. But we always, when we come to the board, when we have an increase in enrollment, we talk about how do we want to solve this? We talk about what plug money we want to use to provide those resources. But this, if our enrollment stayed the same and didn't fluctuate for six years, there would be no more money paid out for math.
And we've already paid the $196, $110, correct?
We paid it for this year.
Okay, so.
This will be for a six-year cycle. Sorry, $745 for a six-year cycle if enrollment stays status quo.
Okay.
So, but in all fairness, they have been really, really great with us as our enrollment has creased. I mean, there's been so many discounts along the way. We have more teacher guides for free. So they're, they're really good to work with in that sense. They're pretty responsive. So I think it's when it's a pretty steep enrollment, then they've charged us. But there's been, if there's, we've added 10 kids, she just sends me stuff. So they've been really great in that sense. And then the licenses are free, so.
So that $196 is for the full six years? It's not an annual thing? Because you just said that it's paid for this year, so I didn't know if that was, that's the amount that's paid for this year.
No, we actually paid, none of this is accurate of what we paid this year. It's different from.
Because we didn't have that full adoption.
Yeah.
So we didn't give the deep discounts. We didn't pay $433.5, but we definitely paid, we paid over $200,000 for what we had this year.
But this is for the projection for next year and then for a six-year cycle.
Yep. So it would be a one-time payment of that. And I believe that these numbers also include the professional development that would come for our teachers. So it's really like this is the full meal deal for the math adoption.
Did we have an actual in writing quote from you that says, here's everything you get, here's what's included?
Yep.
And I can forward that to you guys if you'd like to see it.
Please.
It has the breakdown per school. You'll see a lot of no charges, charges. And so it doesn't necessarily match because they, they pick and choose kind of like, we're this, we're going to give this part free and this part free. So, you know, that kind of a thing. But yeah, I have the whole quote, and you can look through the whole thing.
I mean, really, if you look at the cost, $231 per student, K through 8, I mean, one textbook usually costs about $20, you know?
Well, and it was just, I mean, across the board and all of the parent feedback because a lot of programs are going digital and parents definitely want a tool. They want something to reference, they want something to take home. And so some of these programs have components that you could access online, but then it's a matter of you're printing all of it. You're printing it for parent, I mean, and then you're, it's all paper copy, and then you're trying to bundle it. And then, you know, it's, it's only a portion of it, so you're not getting the full experience. So.
So, so when Dr. Pasley sends you the quote from iReady, just so you know, the way we got to these numbers because of what she's talking about, where they just kind of randomly chose where they were going to give us free things and discount things, was we took the overall, that overall cost, $745,000, and divided it by the number of students to get the per-student cost. And then we figured out, how many kids do we have in K5?
So we broke it apart.
And multiplied by the 23117.
Okay.
Because, so the numbers are not going to jive like this.
But is their assessment, $745,000, agreed with you all?
And you'll see, I actually, I can actually send it to you right now. You'll see at the very top of it, it'll have a breakdown of each of the pieces and then the total amount. And then you can actually see the full discount. And then they actually have it broken down by school. But, you know, if Athol compared to Betty Kiefer, it's going to be different because of the student population. So then they just kind of randomly give you discounts, you know, along the way. So you can see the total discounted piece and all of that. They, it's, it's really easy to kind of read and understand. So I'll forward that on to you guys so you have it.
And then did you reach out to iReady to ask them to tell us what the overall cost for the diagnostic and pathways was going to be? Because we struggled to pull that piece out and give you an accurate number.
And I, because of the way they put the quote together. I have that quote separate too, of just what I have that quote separate too of just what it would be if it was in isolation.
Okay.
Um, so that's where that four thirty-three came, so.
Okay, so if we just did the diagnostic from iReady, it would be four thirty-three-five? And so you just, you just assign that to everyone?
Yep.
And then, but given the seven forty-five?
Yep. I said if we did not go with our math adoption and we just did the diagnostic because I think it was two years ago, that's what we did, then what would that cost be in isolation? That has proven to be really powerful for us because along with the diagnostic, then you have the digital pathway. So that's all that differentiation piece, it's all that personalized piece that, that multiple parents and teachers have talked about. So I got that quote just in isolation and now it is emerged if we go with the program itself, so.
Okay.
I can send you both of those. And then all the materials are back there if you guys haven't had a chance to.
Yes. Thank you.
I have more questions. See, but I have a question for Mr. Wallace though.
Moneybags.
For the, um, the amount that we're talking there, um, I don't have to remember seeing a line item for just, you know, new curriculum purchases or those kinds of things. How would we, uh, so we would have to purchase that in from next year's budget or this year?
It could be either. We definitely, like at the start of this year or even last year, we haven't budgeted that amount for curriculum. How we're able to do it when it's a good time, one is the ESTR dollars. So this can directly be attributed to looting loss or stuff like that. So it's a good use for one-time money, well, even, well, sort of one-time, it does expire. So it could be there and, you know, you know, as our general fund, fund balance is increasing too, we could just use that. But we really plan on using ESTR dollars as, as part of that too. And so if it, um, from just when it, a budget year, when it hit, if it was delivered before June thirtieth, then it would hit this fiscal year. If it was after, you know, July, wanna hit next fiscal year for, you know, so it would show up out of one of those federal funds.
So for now, because we have the ESTR dollars, we don't have to be too critical, but we know going forward, we need a minimum of a hundred and fifteen grand a year set aside just to pay.
For cash.
Yeah. Plus we have to add any kind of.
So. Our plan going into our science adopt, or the, you know, if we're gonna, if we end up going with a science adoption next year is at that very beginning, and maybe Lisa and I can put it together for you for probably the April one, we can start just getting, reaching out some of those programs that we looked at and just getting some initial quotes of, so that you guys just kind of have a ballpark going into trying to plan. And we haven't ran it by teachers yet, we'd want them to have some time to, but at least it would give you, here's the ones that are top rated that are aligned to the standards, um, and then a ballpark of what it costs.
We, as a general rule, I mean, it's almost as if you get on the cycle of curriculum adoptions, you know, it's sort of an every-year cycle. Because, you know, once you hit six, seven years on one subject, it's sort of, you sort of rotate. Every year you're sort of doing one, one of the subject areas. So, you know, really it becomes sort of like your staff costs where you need to have that ongoing. You know, most Idaho school districts, um, you know, we, we still have this hangover, honestly, from the Great Recession. When, you know, and you've seen the graphs, when, when the funding from the state went down and, and hit there, everything just sort of stopped. And, you know, really it's been a ten-year climb. I mean, it took the state over ten years to just get the discretionary funding back to where it was back in two thousand and six. So, you know, it's sort of been, you know, staff moves on, you know, staff age was frozen, salaries were frozen, curriculum adoptions were stopped, I mean, it was, you know, when you live it, you sort of remember it, but people forget. It was not a good time in public education. Actually, now with, you know, the, since the Great Recession, you know, um, you know, we have got more funding from the state, the levies increased, so, you know, we're definitely have sort of climbed out of that hole and need to really make sure that that's planned as we move forward. You know, and then you have to put that in saying, well, if we're gonna set aside, let's say for argument's sake, a seven fifty or a million dollars every year, then you know that, okay, well, that, that's sort of a, we have to have that and that takes away from maybe some other, you know, priorities, but.
I think the education component is a priority. But I'm a little concerned, I keep saying if we do the science. The science has been on the radar for the last two years.
We just need the board to formally give us permission to move forward, so we're saying if, until you tell us.
It is.
That we have your lesson. And we'll break that to you after we get this process.
Okay, okay.
You weren't sure when we saw the money, you were gonna say go forward, if I'm being honest.
You know, to me, this money was sent. Good curriculum.
This is where our money should be.
This is where it should go.
For me to be transparent, that's why I'm saying if.
It's actually very inexpensive. It really is.
Two hundred and thirty-one dollars per child for, oh, yeah.
I mean, even the totality of the number for the size of the district and the students and the staff, I mean, and in the, I'm not a book publisher, but in the software world, I mean, that's, you can't touch anything for that.
But when you look at the others, I mean, that's probably gonna be the greater ballpark. I would imagine science will be in the same boat. Hopefully they give the big discounts, but those, the science programs don't tend to be as comprehensive as like a math or a reading, so can they afford to give those many, you know, that many discounts? Who knows, we'll see. But it's gonna be probably heavier than in years past, for sure.
But we need it.
Sure.
We can't keep limping along hoping that it all works.
Right. Yeah, cause then the next year, well, we probably need to look at social studies.
Yep.
Cause it's been what, twenty, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't had, you know, social studies adoption in a very, very long time.
I know.
So our hope is that we get back on the cycle that we were on when Mr. Jones was superintendent and we, we were, we, every year we adopted a new program for a content area so that we were always up to date and current. And we definitely have moved away from that, but there just needs to be some discussion and planning from, from the board and with, um, Mr. Wallace about how do we wanna fund that? We want a line item on the budget that says new adoption? And then he has to work his magic to figure out how to make all those numbers work? And we might have to figure out where we cut some other things depending on each year of the budget year.
I'd just like to compliment the, the team for the good work. I appreciate the layout since I asked for that particularly, it's very, very helpful. Do you have any feel for whether or not if this were ordered right away, it would come in during this budget year?
It probably would. I don't know if we need to order it right away, to be perfectly honest, because all of our teachers already have teacher's editions. They provided those this year for us through the pilot for everybody, regardless of whether they were piloting their program or not. Um, so we have the teacher's editions. The, there's no reason for us to order the student editions now and have them here by the end of the year.
I'm just thinking about the budget here.
Right, so I'm just, I'm thinking we can order the, my, I would suggest that we order the student editions after July first. It comes out of next year's budget. We certainly could if the board wanted to, to order everything out of this year's budget, we definitely could do that. I just don't know that there's a need to do that, but we do need, the one thing we do need to order is professional development.
I was just gonna say, that to me is the most essential part because even though we did an adoption, not everybody participated in it, so we definitely have some teachers that would need to, that support. When, um, iReady has come in to do building level support and district support, people have been a part of that. But if you're not using it on a regular basis and if, there's a lot to the program that even though we've done an, an adoption and we're going through and we used it for a year, that we haven't even accessed. So the PD would be the most important part so that we can get some of that, um, hopefully in June and then, um, set up for August going into the school year so teachers feel like they can hit the ground running with knowing their materials really well.
And PD is professional development.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
I did that for, just as a reminder because, uh, going back looking, I mean, a lot of times we know only because I have an acronym.
She, yes.
Yep, sorry.
Dr. Meyer always corrects us when we use acronyms to say it first, so.
Right, for Brian, since we're thinking about paying this, uh, ESTR two funds, are there any issues about doing that going from this budget year to next year?
No, it's just, yeah, um, the dollars are, are there. In the GRA, right, they carry over, you know, the, I think, ESTR two, we have all the way through this year and next year, I think, and ESTR three for another, another year. We don't want it to run out before we get to next year.
Right, yeah.
Well, I just don't see a point in delaying and waiting until next year when we have the money now. Get it now, get it here, get it, you know, I. Well, and we don't know what, what we're gonna need next year's money for. We have the money this year, let's use it this year and use next year's money on what may come about next year.
And I absolutely, absolutely agree with you because what I don't want to see happen is what happened with the bus bid. Where this is what we've been quoted and when you finally decide to, to purchase it in July, um, they come back and say, oh, gosh, now we have to raise it two hundred thousand. Not that they would, but that is lingering out there, cause that's what we're doing.
The other, um, you know, component of this is there is, there have been some printing issues just getting that. And so initially when we ordered this, it was pretty fast and then, you know, when we had a higher enrollment, we ordered more and then that took a little bit longer and we've definitely seen some delays. So my only concern would be not ordering those print versions for the student workbooks and then they're not coming in August because it's not just us that's ordering it. iReady has like a hundred and fifty school districts in Idaho they're using, so if we're late in that, then, you know, we're not gonna be able to, is there a delay in what our teachers from the first day of school? That would be my concern. And I'd rather we have every notebook or workbook that we need, we have surplus for, you know, if we have extra students because there, she buffers it a little bit, but we had no way of predicting what that buffer would be this year and that could be our same situation next year. And so she keeps a little side for us, but, you know, when there's so many districts ordering, we definitely wanna be on the front end versus the back end of that.
Correct. I agree. Any more questions? Thank you, please.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, the team, we have a motion in the second from last meeting for the math curriculum. I don't specifically recall what the verbiage was of that motion. So I think it would be more appropriate to just enter a new motion for this, for the math curriculum proposal.
I'd move that we approve the adoption of the iReady, uh, K through eight math curriculum, as submitted in the amount of seven hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars.
I would second that if you will include that it be paid from ESTR two funds.
It'd be paid from ESTR two funds.
And I would like it to be paid this year in the effective on this budget, not next year's.
Agreed.
It's part of the motion?
Yes.
It's a trial motion?
So we have this.
That's a very clever.
Yes, that is the motion.
Okay. I'll second that. Hearing a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing then the motion carries. Moving on.
Is it appropriate to clap?
No, it's a well-earned clap.
You put a lot of work into it, you all did, so.
Yes.
Thanks for coming.
Uh, moving on to board policies. Now, um, we touched on them. Policy, uh, thirty-ten comes with a procedure and a form. And it deals with the enrollment options, um, receiving pupils in the enrollment option program, whether we're taking in district or out of district, both, if we're curtailing it, et cetera. So when we were discussing this, uh, the information that we needed was actually, how many students do we have in district zone transfers and out of district transfers? And what are those numbers in respect to staff? So, by my calculations, this last year, we took in three hundred and seventy-four, or we had three hundred and seventy-four students transferring, um, with two hundred and nineteen of them being in district. And then we would add sixty-three more onto that for those being staff waivers of out of district. And then there were ninety-two students that came in just out of our district. The total calculation of three seventy-four is actually a school. So that's, that's a significant number of transfers. And then the out of district transfers, we were told there weren't any, but there was a significant amount. So, with that being said, we do need to consider if we're going to continue keeping our borders open and just accepting students, um, or if our policy is going to reflect the current behaviors, which is that we have the open borders, but we don't really allow students in because we are, we don't have the capacity. So I'd like to just open it up for discussion and see where we go.
The way, the way I would look at this, the in-zone transfers are our students.
Correct.
And so that really goes just to the issue of whether or not they can move from one school to another within our district and not overload it in some manner or another. We've got those kids.
They're, yeah, they're a combination anyway.
The way I read the, the policy for not receiving pupils, it would waive out of district students of staff members.
Correct.
So this, for example, the sixty-three that are shown for that would still be coming.
Correct.
So we're really talking about the ninety-two.
Correct.
For the most part. And that's almost four classrooms, all kids.
Right.
Also four units.
That were not paid for.
That's a double-edged sword.
Yeah.
Kind of look at it in our respect. But, you know, four classrooms full of students is significant.
It is. Um, I don't know if anybody realized this, um, because it did strike me. The heaviest populations of these out of district transfers deals with our border lines of Bonner. And so I, I mean, I don't know how to, I don't know how to alleviate that in the sense of, I respect the fact that these parents don't wanna send their children on an hour-long bus ride to get to school. They shouldn't have to. But if we can't readjust our boundaries or do something to be inclusive, parents do have the ability to petition to get in, so that we can get their monies. Cause I know that we have had, the last family that came before us wanting to be, um, annexed in, we said yes, Bonner said no. So now they, they did have to take it down to the state board. I really don't wanna put that burden on all of the families, but maybe that's what needs to happen cause I don't know what other route we could take to say we need to, we need to stretch out or do something. That being said, we still don't have the classroom space, so we, we need to, I just want the public to know that I see their dilemma, but it's costing us significantly.
And with that in mind, Ryan, is, is the law now such that we cannot charge tuition?
We can, we can.
But you can just choose not to.
Well, you either can choose to charge tuition or you can accept the ADA from the state, but you can't do both.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
So if we're gonna get apportionment, then we can't charge tuition, so.
So there's no way to make up for the lost. So there's no way to make up for the lost property tax, which is currently issued?
No. Yeah, you can't do that. You know, the only way that you can still get apportionment and charge tuition is if they're out of state. Because then you're not even a resident. So then if, you know, that, there are some districts, especially in southeast Idaho near Utah and stuff like that, that do do that. And you have, and the state gives the, those rates change every year. That you have by the formula that, based on how much they figure that the state gives Lakeland itself per student, that's what you can charge, and it changes, you know, they give us that. That, the State Department of Ed gives us those numbers every year.
I knew there was gonna change, I just didn't remember exactly how it was.
Yeah, and so all the districts that I know of, at least here, Cooney County, Coeur d'Alene, Post Hall, and Lakeland, they don't charge tuition because of getting the apportionment and.
And the apportionment is significant more than what the tuition would amount to.
Usually. And what the, you're right, and when you look at this, is, is from just a pure numbers point of view, it depends if it costs you money or not. So for example, if, let's say you had an extra 50 kids at Lakeland High School that were coming from Post Hall, Coeur d'Alene, and other places. I know that's not the number, but that's just per se. And if you could serve the, those 50 kids within your current staffing, then you actually make money on it, right? Because now you're getting apportionment for it, you're getting like another two units.
Right.
But if you had to hire a teacher and a half, or you had to add a section or something like that, then maybe it did cost you money. I'm not getting to like an elementary level, but at the secondary level, open enrollment can actually help you sometimes. But then it can also, if suddenly you run out of space and you have to, you know, make a lot of accommodations or hire parent support and teacher support and another this or that, then yeah, then it can, it can definitely cause a, a problem. So yeah, it's sort of, you know, especially as we're growing and, you know, our schools are getting closer to capacity, then it, it's more of a concern for sure.
Yeah, appreciate that. I kind, I took a look at the last enrollment numbers for each of the schools. We're not pressed anywhere as, as I see it right now, you're correcting my thing wrong in terms of.
Timberlake Middle School is, I mean, now that we added the sixth grade to Timberlake, that is our, our most, and Garwood is getting there.
Getting there.
Moving the sixth grade to the, to the, you know, Lakeland and Timberlake really helped take pressure off the buildings. I mean, Spirit Lake Elementary was, I mean, we were running, you know, band was in the gym the whole year, a couple of years ago before the pandemic. But having the sixth grade move out, I mean, that did really help, but now it's put pressure at Timberlake Middle. And, and Garwood is, is definitely now becoming our, you know, the school that is sort of.
Potentially.
Yeah, and, you know, that's where a lot of that growth with, you know, just, you know, how it's growing out across Lancaster, you know, all those housing developments sort of hit Garwood's zone.
And have you done projections for the next two, three years?
I did a cohort models, I'm working on budget. You know, and I, you know, I don't really do it by building. I mean, you could take a look and lose a proportion because that's sort of tough to do, but, you know. Roughly, I think it's a pretty good guess that the cohort model showing that, you know, next year, we should have about, you know, 1.5% growth sort of the next few years, each year. So you figure, you know, 1% is, you know, it, it's anywhere from 100 and 150 more kids every year.
So you're, you're not thinking, well, you hit as hard as we did this year?
No, I, I don't think so, because some of that was relative to the previous year when we had the dip in the pandemic. If you look at, if you took just before the pandemic, and then, you know, we were at 46 something, and then we went down to 43, and now we're at 47. So if you took that little dip out, our, our trend line is sort of what it has been the last couple of years.
Very consistent.
Yeah. So it seems every year we're like, you know, 60 to 70 to 110 more each year. I think we have one big class leaving, though.
Is that true?
There's, there's a bubble now. The senior class is small.
Lakeland High School will gain about 65 kids with the difference between the graduating class and the incoming freshman.
Yeah, because like Lakeland High right now, they're lower now than they were three years ago. But some of that, our bigger classes are moving out now.
Thank you.
May, may I add something to your question?
You've certainly.
Trustee Jones? I, I would want to highlight for the board that Spirit Lake Elementary is at maximum capacity. They have zero classrooms available, and we have very large third grade numbers. We would have put another teacher in that building, we had no place to put that teacher. Spirit Lake is a concern.
They're at maximum functional capacity?
Yes. Well, they, they're using all rooms, all space. They had no workspaces.
Right.
Yes. We could add more kids and increase the class sizes, which we don't want to do.
No, we don't.
But, but we would have added another teacher to Spirit Lake this year had we had room to put them in.
Okay. So I think the last report showed Spirit Lake at 303, does that sound about right?
Yeah, right around 300.
And, and 13 of those were out of district transfers, not waiver.
May I, may I speak to that?
Out of white grade level, they probably sprinkled across all of it.
Yeah, yeah, so we have not for the last few years really accepted anybody out of district. I think, I can think of one hardship this year that we accepted at Lakeland High School. So all of those kiddos that you're seeing have been here for a couple of years. So when we made the decision not to allow new ones to come in, we may also made the decision to grandfather those who were already here and let them continue, so, yes.
I guess all the questions I had.
All right. Other conversation regarding this? Well, we do have to decide which route we're going to go before we can determine which version of the policy is to adopt. Because one version is accepting out of district transfers, the other version is not accepting out of district transfers. However, we would accept staff, we would allow staff waivers. And then one thing that I had stated was that I do believe that at the high school level, we should grandchildren, we should grandfather those children in so that they can finish their high school career unless they choose to move to a different school. But I don't think it should be universal throughout the entire district because then you're juggling so much. I think the cutoff should be high school because that's a significant period of time for these kids.
Can I just throw out a thought about that?
Sure. Some of those kids who are in eighth grade have been in our school system since kindergarten, and all of their friendships through school at least, or from their Spirit Lake time going into Timberlake or Athol and going into Timberlake, it becomes really hard for kids. I mean, we can do it, I just want us to, I just want to make sure we're thinking about all aspects of the child. Because you're, I mean, we're at that point saying that after nine years of school in our district, we're going to now send you to Priest River High School as a freshman without really having those solid friendships. That would, that would be a little worrisome for me.
Anybody that's in is in right now and then go on from here. Right?
Is that what you're saying?
Like grandfather all the kids that are in already in our school district? And then start fresh from, you know, no, not allowing anybody to come in because we're full.
There, there's where a little bit of rum comes, I think, because if you really did that, then that would preclude waivers for staff in the future. And I don't know whether.
Or include.
Yeah, in other words, you know, you said, we'll grandfather everybody who's in now, but we're not gonna take anybody in the future.
Besides staff enrollment.
Does that include joint staff?
No.
I think David's just talking about that 92 kids that are out of district and they don't have a staff waiver or anything. They're just here from out of district and they aren't.
Make anybody mad. The kids that are in the district right now are grandfathering. Staff waivers are one thing, but other than that, we start fresh and move forward. Because we're full, right?
We are.
Okay, so we can't just let everybody in.
So then what do we do with the families that their brothers and their older brothers and sisters are in?
Yeah.
Do you allow the, the siblings? Because then that just keeps extending it further back and then longer and later and it, it continues.
And I added that, we actually are already starting to get phone calls around that. Where I have a fifth grader moving to the junior high or the middle school, but we're having, we have a kindergarten starting. And so parents are asking, we're in the district, even though we're now moving schools, so someone's going to Lakeland Middle School, but I want to be able to start a Ben Kiefer with my kinder, and it's a sibling, it's a brother or sister, and so will you accept my open enrollment? So that's another consideration.
Well, they're in the district.
No, they're open enrollment, but they're, they're, the sixth grader, going to be sixth grader, has been in the district since kinder under open enrollment, so a grandfather situation. And so they want that grandfather situation extended to their kinder that will be starting next year.
But they won't either be in the same school regardless. They will not be in the same school together because
Yep.
that student will be gone by that, by the time that kindergarten ends.
So those phone calls have already started.
Oh, I'm sure.
So that was just one thing as a consideration. And the policy committee, we've talked about that, but it's definitely, parents are already starting to make phone calls around that. So, and we've, we'll say that, like, well, they're not even gonna be in the same school, they're not, you know, but it's what they know and it's so.
Right, it's unfamiliarity.
It's a hard place to be because at the same time, I've had conversations with constituents who might be grandparent age or don't have children, but they have friends whose children, their friends live Post Hall, Coeur d'Alene, and their kids come here, and they're upset that their tax money pays for other, what they don't consider their pay for forward kids. It's just a hard spot to be in, but I do agree that at some point, we have to make the hard decision. We are where we're at. This is where we're at. Every year we get more students who are in our district, more and more, and we're shuffling and, you know, putting up portables and trying to figure out, you know, what class can do this, where. We just had the, it was first grade teachers, whatever, we voted for the S R funds and the 1.4762 million or whatever it was to hire the more first grade teachers. And, I mean, we just have, so at some point, we have to put the brakes on until the patrons within the district, we can all come to an agreement how we're gonna get bigger facilities, more facilities, more space, add on. I mean, I don't know what the answer is, but I don't see how we can just keep.
Right.
Well, when you look at the fact that Timberlake Middle School is at capacity, their enrollment and their functional capacity are exactly the same number right now. We're talking about putting in another portable up there, and yet that school is one of the highest for transfer students.
Right.
Especially out, I mean, it is the highest for out of dis, well, I guess.
The middle and senior high school.
Yeah.
Maybe I can back up to something that Mrs. Sexton said about not admitting new transfers to speak of within the last year or so.
It's been two or three years.
Most of the 92 are kids who have been here routinely for a number of years. If we say that we're gonna grandfather those, they're not gonna go away because they're still gonna be here. And so if we say, well, we're not gonna accept any new ones, that's really what we've already been doing, I think.
Except I.
For the most part, except you have to process them.
Right, that, and because it's not, because we have a policy that says we accept open enrollment, that's all the parents really look at, and they don't look at the details with regard to having to go through the process and make sure that, that it's not putting a burden on our taxpayers. And we have some really nasty telephone conversations from parents who get very frustrated. And our, our realtors don't help us any because to sell homes up there, close to Spirit Lake in particular, they will tell the potential home buyer that they're buying in the Lakeland School District, and then they're shocked when they find out that they're actually not. And they're literally, you know, two or three miles away from Spirit Lake Elementary and to Board Chair Thompson's point, an hour from their actual elementary they're zoned for. So to have a policy in place that says that we're not going to accept, actually, I think, will help us have different communication plans.
You'll still get some of the, well, you let all the teachers' kids in, but I, my kid can't come. We'll still get some of that.
So make it a closed district and by, what do you call it? Anybody else that wants in has to come before the board and petition the board.
Oh, my gosh, you could be talking about hundreds of people.
Really?
You don't, you don't want to process them down here.
Yeah, it's a, that's a large number.
Yeah. Because then the other thing we have, which that's very hard to track down unless we knock on everybody's doors and report of all the kids we have that somehow proved residency that don't live here. And really, I think we saw a huge influx of that when we had to change the policy during the COVID time because everybody was just getting so inundated at the district office, or the school offices or wherever when they were registering.
One of the things we used to do with regard to proving residency was they had to actually have a notarized document saying in, where they lived if they couldn't produce a utility bill or a mortgage statement. So if I'm living with my parents, I had to, we actually had to have a notarized document. We don't require that anymore. And I'm not quite sure if that change was a legal change or if that was just a, a change that, that we made. But we did have parents jump through a few more hoops, I guess, to prove residency if they couldn't produce the utility bills and the mortgage statements or the rental agreements. I don't know if that comes out of the K and M to you, remember, Dr. Gosley?
What was the school district quality, like, do you have a, that rich?
I think that everybody's very comfortable with closing our boundaries and not accepting. And to Mr. Wallace's point, there, when we, when we were a closed district for a lot of years and the bound, we opened the boundaries because we were having to be planning enrollment, and that helped us with our. Um, the bound, we opened the boundaries because we were having to be planning enrollment and that helped us with our, our budget to bring in kids from outside of the district. So sometimes it does help us, but we're at a point right now where we're going to have to go to the, just the community at some point and ask for them to build another school. Um, I don't think we want to do that where we're allowing kids from outside the district to fill our current schools, so.
I agree. I mean, it just, it looks.
Cause we're putting that tax burden on the people who live in this community.
Right. Well, it just burdens everybody. It burdens the students when they have to be in the crowded school and it burdens the teacher when they're having to. You know, teach a higher number of students in the classroom, although we try and give them a stipend or we do give them a stipend for that to try and alleviate some of it. Uh, but it is burdensome. So, I mean, just in so many ways. And I would have to say that our, our, um, taxing base is nowhere in comparison to our surrounding districts.
No.
So I'm, uh. And if that is the consistence, uh, consensus with Mrs. Arnold chairing that those within the district are at this point also in groups with the, uh. I guess that would be thirty ten A two, not receiving pupils in the enrollment program. Uh, oh, options program, which is, uh.
With the exception of non-resident staff members, no one is.
Right.
We accept no out of district. And then there's a process for in district transfers, which is what they've been doing, so.
I have little further discussion.
Okay.
I'm good.
Well. Like we do choose to do the no more. We do need to determine, we do need to get direction. I guess that would be the better word. With where. With where we stand, uh, currently with those that are already out of our district and they're in our schools. Are we grandfathering all of them in? I personally think it's most appropriate to grandfather at the high school level. And just let them graduate out. You're talking for four years and then we're done. And who knows? I mean, maybe if, you know, the money tree grows and we are able to, you know, put in two more schools because we desperately need that. Then we can open borders back up if that's what we need to consider. Um, I would hope that any bond or parent, um, that wants to come into our district and they're out of the zone, that they would do their due diligence. To get into our district because it's a win-win. Right now it's only a one-sided win. And that's not fair to the district.
Well, our larger numbers, like Trustee Bane said, are as far as out of district transfers are at Timberlake. Uh, Middle School and Timberlake High School.
Correct.
So if we, um, grandfathered. In the, I guess the hard thing to see by just these numbers is we don't have great level, you know, to look at to say, oh, well. You got a hundred and six graders that are gonna, right.
Yeah.
But just looking at these very high level numbers. Well, without considering I assume, I don't know, but I would say that. They probably just leave all of them. And just move forward, leave it the way it is and just move forward because I don't know where all these kids are, you know? Or if that puts, I mean, thirteen in Spirit Lake, does that put thirteen more at the middle school on top of how many are there or is it? Thirteen first graders or?
Isn't that number breakdown in the other? I couldn't find it. I was looking for that spreadsheet.
Yeah.
It was changed in the links, so I don't know where it is.
I was looking for it too.
The vice group.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the B option policy does not give direction with respect to those who are currently out of district transfers?
Correct.
Do we need to do that separately or as a part of the policy?
I would think we would need to do that separately so that the district had direction.
Okay. Just clarification.
No, thank you.
I'm ready.
Is everybody else ready?
I think I'm good.
Okay. All right. So then I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I would move to approve, uh, policy thirty ten A two, not receiving pupils in the enrollment options program. Um, as presented with the understanding that those whom are currently out of district transfers. Would be grandfathered in and that the application of the policy. Well, it does address district staff, but they would be allowed waivers.
I'll second.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Hearing one, the motion carries. Uh, we need policy thirty ten P and policy thirty ten F. I don't know if we have discussion, if we need to have discussion, further discussion on those. Um, thirty ten P is the procedures, um, for. The enrollment process and we would be adopting the one that is specific to, uh, in district only, which would be thirty ten P A two, I believe. Um, and this is just more of an elaboration of policy thirty ten. And it aligns with thirty ten. We, we took a significant amount of time to make sure that they, they were, uh, in alignment. And this is a policy, the, the policy and procedures are one that the board does need to review annually, especially given class size. And then the form, um, I'm not exactly sure why we have. Two different forms because they're the same forms, except one form has boxes and the other one has fillable lines. That would be, um, for a parent to be able to just fill it out online and then, you know, print it, bring it in. I don't know. Is, is it, it's not electronically submitted to the district, correct?
It's a fillable form.
And they just print it out?
So it would be electronically submitted, right, in the fillable form?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just a PDF fillable, so if they saved it and then emailed, they could do it either way.
Okay, okay. Well, that's good to know. So, um.
Those two good ways.
Okay.
Just a clarification, both, both of the forms presented are fillable. It's just how you wanted to see it. So if somebody had to print it.
Okay.
Would you prefer the boxes or the gray outlines? So we just wanted to provide an option for the board to choose from.
Okay. Okay. They wouldn't need to be modified. Um, well, I guess they wouldn't, never mind. Cause the out of district application would be applicable. No, it wouldn't. It would just be a staff doing it. Okay, so you would need to remove the out of district application offered before.
So caveat to that, uh, for both of these, these were the two, because we needed to wait for this discussion to happen. We have not. Taken this back to parents for parent input.
Okay.
That we did the policies, but not the procedure and the fillable. And so I think a, a few weeks back, we said that once we have that decision, then we share. Get the board's consensus and then bring those back to get some input from parents and then. If you wanted procedures and, and forms to be.
But their input would just be for the, I didn't think we were having them.
I, I feel like at one point we said policy, all policies would go in front of parents for some input, not necessarily procedures and forms.
Correct.
And then I think we said that maybe this one would, so I'm not sure where we landed with that, but.
Okay.
I feel like we kind of talked about both, but I mean, it would be an easy change just to take off the open enrollment.
Right.
And we actually talked about that if that's what they decided to do, depending on which one you liked, but, um, I just wanted to make sure you knew that we did not get parent input on this. If we make a decision, great, but we did not send this out to parents for input or community, the first for input.
Right, and I think it was my understanding that because it's, it's, it's a form.
Right.
And it's just, you know, the procedures are aligned with the policy and they've given input and that's all in consideration. But whatever the board wants to do, if they want to have the procedures and the forms go out to parents for input.
I don't think that's necessary.
With respect to the form, uh, there's a place here to check out of district application. Will that stay?
No, that would be removed. Yeah. So that we wouldn't have people being looked at inside on the floor.
I'm checking this box and that tells me that that's an option.
Right, exactly.
Avoid confusion, Marty.
Yeah, please. Okay, so does anyone have any further conversation for you, the procedure or the form? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'm moved that we approved the policy through, well, the procedure document three zero one zero P A two dot one. That aligns most appropriately with the thirty ten. A two policy.
I was like, yeah. Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Um, I do believe we need to have a motion regarding policy, uh, thirty ten F for the form. It should be noted that Lakeland has had its own form for this. My concern with what was presented at the policy committee is there was an additional contract that we were having parents sign. Nowhere in the statute does it say you can do that, but we did put the components, um, that are required within the statute. For this in the approved or the denied section. So, um, cause we do want to make sure parents are, have a clear understanding of their responsibilities once their child's in, under a transfer and what that means. And what their obligations are, so. So I'll make a motion to approve the policy thirty ten F.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, I just have a question. Like what, so which, which of the two forms are you? I thought that was basically all we had to decide was which of the two forms you wanted. Well, the forms. Thirty ten F or that two or thirty ten F?
The forms are the same. What the layout difference is, is one shows the, uh, grayed out typing section for someone filling it in online. The other form shows boxes if someone were to print it out and handwrite in their information.
So we have two different forms?
Mm-hmm.
We're, we're approving both forms?
I would say yes.
Okay.
Okay.
With the, uh. Motion in a second, but I'd like to move the motion over the floor.
Okay.
Um, with the, um. Redaction of the out of district application section in the form.
I'll accept that. Having a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Right.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And then lastly, the policy thirty eighty. This is our non-resident student policy. Previously it was specifically identified as out of state, but I believe Trustee Grissom, the statute reads for non-resident. It doesn't read out of state. So we kind of realigned it with the statute in its language. Um, and then we, of course, curtailed it to meet our district needs, not all this special language that was thrown in there. And given that we have adopted, uh, to close our borders. How does this apply to that?
Well, I guess it would, it would be in place if we did have to like kind of. Emergency open our borders, if you will. Um, we would at least have it in place if that was the case, if we did open.
You know, there is something, um, and I asked for clarification and really didn't get it. There is something. I'm going to call it extenuating circumstances, but that's not the word. It's not extenuating. Oh man, we couldn't get a legal definition of it. Um, but non-resident applies also to, by statute, by those out of district and out of state.
Okay.
So the legal definition of non-resident is either or. So if there was some. Do you remember that word? I cannot remember the word. Uh. It was a specific situation, not an emergency, but some kind of egregious situation or some extenuate, what's?
Exigent?
Mm-hmm. Anyways. There is always a possibility because of the federal rules that we may have to. Accept a non-resident student. So that's sort of where this policy.
Non-resident, out of state?
Well, non-resident includes out of our district and out of state.
But this policy applies only to out of state, right?
No.
Non-resident.
Non-resident by the statute means out of district and out of state. You know, we keep calling it out of state, but legally it's called non-resident. And the statute is written for non-resident.
How can we, how can we put this policy in place if we just exclude? Non-residents?
Because they, that's what I was saying. There was a, um, we don't have to, but there was something that we came across that I can't remember.
So thirty eighty, we are, we always have had and so in, initially it was drafted out of state. And so when Trustee Grissom and I were looking through it, it kept saying non-resident, non-resident, which encompasses anyone with not in your borders. And so there was, um, extenuating circumstances. It was a different, um, play on words a little bit, but there could be circumstances where, and you know, like if it was a, um. There was like a safe harbor. There was a couple of situations where it talked about that you could accept a student, like if it was a bullying situation from another school. That it gave the district a little bit of leeway beyond just that we have closed borders to allow, uh, but I can't remember the exact verbiage. Was that your understanding too, Trustee?
Yes, yes, there were. There could, even though we close our borders, the government can still come to us and say, this. Falls under these guidelines and you have to make exceptions.
There's an exception to every rule.
Yes.
Well, and a huge part of this that we pulled, I was just going to say that we pulled out of that, like McKinney Vento fell under there.
It's not a requirement under McKinney Vento. It's, it's optional. It says may.
Yes, but that was what, it kind of listed some of those pieces. It had, um, uh. I can't think of the verbiage right now, but, um.
I'm rapidly trying to find it.
There was some, there was Idaho youth under there. I mean, there was a couple of categories specifically that they said may fall under that category. I don't feel like there was anything that was a have to. It was just may, and so it gave a little bit of leeway.
The board doesn't have to adopt it, but that's sort of where it came about because there was this little caveat, you know?
But originally this was titled out of district. But we changed the language to match uh, statute.
Right.
And you're saying that we cannot apply that narrow definition? What do you mean, the other state?
Well, we can, but there really is nothing in statute. There is nothing in statute that calls it out of state. It's all non-resident. And that, if you look at the statute, the statutory definition of non-resident is out of district and out of state.
I understand what you're saying. Uh, my question is whether or not we have the ability to narrow the definition to out of state. Because if you don't, you've just opened the door back up, at my judgment, to what we just passed a few minutes ago.
Well, we can, we can do, you know, whatever the board chooses to do, but I mean, if it's not a legal, I mean, I guess we can write whatever we wanna write or just not have the policy. You know? Uh, but that's the only reason we brought it is because we had this. So when we look at the policies, every policy that it references has to come in line with whatever, and this was one of those things. So that's the only reason we brought it to the board. I mean, whatever the board chooses to do.
Well, and if you read the very first paragraph, this is talking about our district agreeing with another district to accept. So we don't have to agree to accept the student. Specifically, if it's going to be a hardship on our district. So I take that as, you know, there's, there's more, there's more meat in this policy than just opening the door to make everybody come back into our district. And it's specific to another student um, in another, it's students in another state. Not county. So, I mean, if, I guess someone from Newman Lake was like, no, I need to come here. And the Newman Lake School District wanted to enter into an agreement with us, and we felt that that would be appropriate because within that agreement, we would then be receiving tuition. I mean, there, there's, there's kind of some nice components to this policy, but I mean, I hear what you're saying. I just.
I mean, just the fact that it was, the other reason it came to the board is because it was referenced in the other policies we just addressed. And not knowing which way the board was gonna go, and being that this does specifically talk, well, it talks about both, anyways, and updating the language is why it came to the board. So whatever the board chooses to do with it.
So this paragraph, the district student attending school in another state. Board trustees may agree in writing on an annual basis that a resident student attends school in the nearest appropriate school district in a neighboring state. Such agreement shall state the rate of tuition and cost of transportation, if any, to be paid by the district. The agreement will be entered into the records of the board of trustees. So does that mean this also applies to our students that may wanna go to school in Washington, so we need to have this in place, even if our borders are closed? We need to be able to enter into an agreement if, if say, one of our students was going to
Right.
To Newman Lake instead of a Newman Lake kid coming here. I, I think that we do need to have this in place. And then so that we. So that we can appropriately agree to that, that type of situation because we have a policy to do so.
My dear. And I understand and agree. That's the next paragraph that I find is concerning. The one on non-resident students attending school in the district. Because the way that's written, it sounds to me like we're talking about students from post falls or quart lane or somewhere else in the state of Idaho, which is the same problem we've been trying to cope with.
Well, it says, uh, I may end up looking at the, which one are you looking at? The one I see says school district in another state. Is that under the non-resident students attending school in the district?
Which paragraph?
I think the first one. Trustee Jones, which, which one?
Which paragraph are you on? Which paragraph are you on?
Yeah, that, that's, that's where I am. The non-resident students attending school in the district.
Oh, okay.
And it does reference another state. But then it goes down and talks about an open enrollment, non-resident student, you know. That seems circular.
Well, we still have open enrollment kids if we're taking waivers for staff kids.
Well, and any student that's within our district that is transferring is an open enrollment student.
Right, that's what, and, and any out of district kids that has, have staff waivers are also an open enrollment kid. Would they just have a waiver?
Right.
To allow them to do that regardless of their reason. I mean, that is their reason. They don't have to provide a different, different reason.
Policy that we just approved. That's, that's pretty well covered. So if, you know, if we have an understanding that this applies only to out of state students, then I think, it all makes sense. I, I just struggle with the fact that it appears to overlap into the issue that we've already dealt with. And that's why I ask whether or not we could narrow the definition to out of state. So up, up at the very top where it started out, attended by and out of state is, is a strike through. Non-resident students. And the reason you did that is because out of state is not referenced in the statute.
Correct, yeah, there's no legal reference to out of state.
But is there anything that says we cannot narrow the definition to that?
No, there's nothing that says that.
So my suggestion is we leave out of state as part of that title.
So then when we come down to where it actually talks about resident students, should that be changed to in district students?
We've already dealt with that, so.
And that would be for when a resident student wants to move over to an out of state.
That would be an out of state situation.
But it's district students attending schools in another state. The board of trustees may agree in writing on an annual basis that a resident student attends school in the nearest appropriate school district in a neighboring state. So would we be, are we concerned about that, we're being resident and not being in district?
No, because I, well, in my thinking, no, because in both instances, we're talking about students who's gonna go from one state to the other. Whether it's one of our students that goes to Washington or a Washington student that comes to us.
Okay.
If that, you know, that, I think was the gist of this whole policy.
Can I add a clarifying?
Yeah.
When we started looking at this, some of our struggle was in multiple policies, because trustee Grissom referenced this. We tried to pull anything that was cross-referenced, and we use interest, in district or zone transfer. But then when you look at some of the definitions and what the title is per statute, it doesn't say that. So like, open enrollment encompasses all of that. So we're really trying to provide clarity. If somebody were to check into that, that what it's called, it's actually called that on our policy, and so it matched. And even when you looked at some of the forms that ISBA sent, in district would have one title, and then a little bit lower would have another title, and it would say a zone transfer student or accepted student, like there's just all of these kind of verbiage that's put all over the place. And so we were really just trying to clean that up, that it was just, you know, coherent, and then seeing to what it was called, we called it. And so when we said thirty eighty and we looked it up, there wasn't anything it talks about, the language talks about out of district, but all of the titles, all of um, the policies referenced, and even the statute reference from there was all about non-resident student. And specifically, non-resident could be a post falls and a state, out of state. So if we make those changes, we're just gonna wanna make sure it aligns with what we're saying, what our language has been in the other policies, because, I mean, there were literally, I think at one point, we counted five different verbiage for the same thing. And so it, it just wasn't clean, and so when we have those conversations with parents, and then they check statute and they feel like we're not being transparent, or we're misplacing our understanding of it because it doesn't match, because it literally has multiple uses of different words for the same meaning. That was why we tried to make it a little bit broader and cleaner.
Appreciate that.
So is there further discussion?
I prefer to keep this one the way, the way that it has been corrected to by the policy committee.
I understand what trustee Jones is saying. I, I get that, but I, my concern is always if we aren't using the same legal language all the way across, then we're not, you know, we've already been through this with the district's language not being correct, and it's legally bit us.
Yeah.
And I guess that's why it was a little bit more.
Well, according to um, title thirty three fourteen oh one, you know, it states, non-resident pupils means pupils attending schools in districts other than their home districts or from other states. Would you want that clarifying language on there so that people knew?
I want to vote.
Okay, okay, ready to vote. Does anybody else have questions? Further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, then we'll take a motion on policy thirty, I'll entertain a motion on policy thirty eighty.
I'm moved to approve policy thirty eighty as presented.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One nay. Motion carries. Moving on to discussion items. First item is the superintendent selection process. HR Director Cunningham sent us several documents. Has anyone had a chance to review them? Do we have further questions so that we can work on maybe cleaning them up or would I, because I, I posted my questions. I don't know if anybody saw. Thank you for your answers, Brooke. I do appreciate some clar, because I just had some clarifications of like um, just the different groups, who gets, who appoints the people in those groups, and who are those groups, and are they co-mingled in, you know, I, because it, I wasn't clear. So I did ask some of those questions. I didn't know if we wanted to finalize any critique on those so that Brooke can continue to just make them clean, so that if we're in a position to if and when or whatever, in a position to move forward, we're ready to go and we can get it done. Brooke, I noticed that you said you don't recommend Indeed um, for various reasons, and I can respect that. I believe Bob had stated that long ago in the past, we would, you know, publish notice at the various universities. And I recall, I think you had said, we don't really do that anymore. Could, could that be consideration in lieu of Indeed? I mean, just posting at universities or?
So are you, is the reason because you're looking for somebody fresh out of college or?
No, the reason is just to open the, broaden the horizon for candidate selection.
So I guess you would wanna consider uh, what audience you're targeting then? If you, if you did post on the universities, I don't know if you'd be targeting an experienced administrator that way. It's just.
Things may have changed, Brooke, you know, before I got it, and I do, in the, in the past, we used college placement offices as, as a primary resource because most graduates went back to their placement office when they were looking for a new job, you know, to do something. Maybe that's not a case study.
So many more options.
I did take the liberty of looking a little bit, and you know, there's a new thing called handshake, I think it is, or something. Many of them are using now. I'm not familiar with that.
Yes, and I do, I do have access to that. So, but yeah, that was just my thought process of what kind of audience you're gonna target. Are you, I mean, are you guys looking for somebody experienced? Are you looking, because there's so many platforms these days, that the ones that are gonna be looking at the campus universities are usually, you know, graduate students, people who've just, you know, finished up and might not have any experience in this world. They might not even had an assistant superintendent. That's so, but I'm happy to do whatever you guys would like.
But how much experience did Dr. Meyer have when she was hired for this position, for superintendent position?
She had an assistant superintendency prior um, to coming here, so she did have, and she had um, principal um, experience. So she had administrator experience.
So don't they have to go back? Most students, they go back to school anyways for like, to give the superintendent endorsement and the, or whether they get a master's, PhD, whatever they're getting for um, the education administration degree.
I think our concern is how do we get the broadest coverage within, let's say, the state of Idaho, maybe eastern Washington, something like that.
Sure.
Of course, that's, that's the audience that we're.
Yeah. And that, that brings up the platforms that I had recommended, was trying to target that.
Well, I know ISBA just sent out another flyer that they've got, I think, five or six districts that are looking for superintendent.
Yeah. Yeah.
For this upcoming school year.
It was quite a shuffle in Idaho this past year or two.
They did a pretty good job on their presentation. I liked, I looked at all of their, well, there was one that had a video I thought was really cute, Payette. And then I looked at all the brochures that they did. They were, actually did a really good job on them.
It's really not ISB that designs that. It usually comes from the districts.
Yeah, they just did, I was gonna say, they just did a really good job of presenting.
The districts did a job.
Yeah. And I was, I really liked the idea. Payette did the little video and had the students involved. That was really cute.
Yeah.
You did a really good job. Um, I don't think I have any particular questions um, at the moment. I mean, based upon Dr. Meyer's request that we not do anything until she hears one way or the other from uh, Pondreys School District. I mean, we're just sort of in limbo anyways. So I guess we just keep working on the documentation and then.
The intent was, and I put it out there in draft form.
Okay.
Because you guys are, you're really good at wordsmithing and stuff, and by the time I go in and start designing the brochure and stuff, we don't have, you know, all the verbiage finalized. It can throw off the format.
Okay, gotcha.
So that's why I was looking for some input from you guys.
Yeah, I made a, I mean, some of the, the red letters are mine. I uh, I, I liked, I kind of reformatted a little bit of, or not reformatted, but restructured how some things were given and kind of moved them around. But the one thing that really kind of struck out or struck me was from the document that was used before in the search. We had these qualities and qualifications, and then we had challenges and opportunities. Some of these challenges and opportunities seem to align more with qualities that we would, are looking for. So, and I didn't necessarily like, I don't like to present things in a negative fashion. So, you know, saying you've got challenges to overcome before you walk into the district, I don't think is a good thing. But none of the things that were put were, were challenged. It was just kind of a, you know, we'd like you to be able to do this, be able to do that type of, at least that's how I read it. So I didn't know if we wanted to, instead of have qualities and qualifications, have a specific qualifications. And then these are all the qualities, qualities or, and opportunities or whatever that are coming with the district. So that it's just like, it's all positive for someone that's considering employment, you know, when you're looking for a job. So that was just something that really struck out with me. I liked the verbiage and everything that was put there. I didn't like how it was titled because I didn't think it really fell in line with, for me, what the title means. So that was just kind of, I think if we hone down and say, "These are the qualifications", and then maybe, "These are all the qualities and/or opportunities" or whatever we want to say for that. I don't know if anybody else had kind of picked that up or not, but...
But it's really the, the challenges thing is asking them how they would respond or, or meet those challenges. So, yeah. I, I understand where you're, where you're going and trying to keep it positive.
Well, I mean, "Has experience in the selection and implementation of educational priorities consistent with the interest and needs of students, staff, board, and community?" Is that a challenge or is that an opportunity when we're asking for that, that quality? Or that, that's where I was just kind of like, wait, what are we really? What are we trying to have someone understand by this section of verbiage? Oh, and then, Brooke, I was curious, on the very last section of this, it says, "Questions, concerns, complaints, requests, et cetera, should be forwarded to the Office of the Superintendent."
Yeah, it should be to, it should be to the administrators or the administrative.
Of our district?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Cause I was a little confused.
Yeah, how are you gonna do that? There's no superintendent.
Yeah, so, okay. And then, but then I didn't know, well, are we going out to the state board? I mean, is that where they're supposed to go?
No, she could say Lakeland Administrative Office.
Okay. So do we want to prepare some sort of a timeline in the event that she does, she is offered the position and she does accept it at the Ponderay?
Tentative timeline.
Tentative timeline? So that we don't have to come back to the table again and, and do this?
I think a timeline is, is a good plan.
Okay.
Not get too deep into anything else because then it's just time wasted and stuff for no reason.
Correct.
And I think we could even just do, you know, the first, on the timeline, just those first few
Okay.
items until we know more.
I mean, we can't even, I mean, in March twenty-third, as far as us approving anything, I don't even think we can do that because she won't even hear back until twenty-fifth, or whenever it was.
Right, I think that's what she said, yeah.
Oh, true, we really can't put dates until we know when we know.
I mean, we might not need any dates.
True.
You know, we might not even be doing any of this, so...
I mean, so you guys can leave things as is for right now, but at least you have the robust part of it and there is a plan that's there. And then when you guys say go, we go.
Okay. Yeah. And then we can put, write those dates in at, you know, our next meeting or what, you know?
Well, our next meeting is not until April thirteenth.
Okay.
So we begin to meet again. So, in... All right.
Not again.
We are your second family. Or third, or fourth, or however many you wanna put us in there.
You don't wanna know.
So, so she will likely know on Friday.
So you could put a tentative for it.
We could, well, we could just put dates in here just for the first, that would get us up to basically to the thirteen, you know, not go much beyond that. And then we would have, I think, a better picture by then to...
I hear, but the, the first date is when we're gonna shoot everything out. When we're gonna, when we're gonna publish, if we need to publish.
Well, we're gonna have to meet anyway to decide on all of the documentation though, right? So we're gonna have to meet again anyway. Don't shake your head no, I mean. You're saying yes, but you're saying no. Yes.
So I guess in the meantime, if we have any other revision, we can just put a little note or adversity through the document.
Just like Michelle did, she just inserted comments and so that's very...
And red letters.
Right, okay. I did notice on all the other, and maybe that's just, I don't know if they actually shared a template or where that came from, but all the other superintendent search brochures that ISBA shared out, they all have a qualifications section.
Okay.
So it's not qualifications or qualifications or...
Well, we, you know, they had qualities and qualifications. I just was more concerned about the second portion because some of what's listed down there, I think, is very, is prudent to put it out there. That this is, this is what we're going for. I just don't like the title.
Yeah, some of them used to be shuffled and all.
Yeah, exactly.
Qualifications.
Right. Or qualifications and then all the rest, you know? Just so that it's, cause I think qualifications are very targeted. You know, we want this. You, you will have to have that or please don't apply because then...
So we'll just keep going back to the documents then and update or change or insert? I mean, that's what I'm hearing until we know for sure after Friday when we are.
Okay.
Yes, it, it seems like at this juncture, assuming we're here one way or the other on Friday, if on Friday or after Friday, we know whether or not we're gonna move forward.
Right.
The next, very next issue is when do we put the announcement out? And that's what Brooke needs to know.
Yeah, correct.
And so, and then from there, you would just continue to do the work for me.
Well, yeah, we can, she can like, cause like I did see, you know, link coming or whatever. So we can get the information out there. We just don't have to have the supplemental materials to entice people to apply. But we should get that done as quickly as possible.
How about Friday, after Friday, we find out? And then Monday, Bob can go in and start where he left off.
Come on, Bob.
We said you already started it. You gotta finish your job.
That's right, Bob.
So, yeah, the advertisement's the biggest portion of it. That's the one that I just wanna get, you know, backed up and make it really pretty and...
Right. Well, I would imagine that on Monday, we'll be determining if we need to have another meeting again. And...
Let Bob finish his job.
Yeah, Bob, you signed up. You've used that hand.
Yeah, he did, he did volunteer.
Hey.
Okay, so do we want to move on to other discussion items? Does everyone kind of have their understanding of what they need to do?
Yeah, I think so.
Until we get to the, until we know what we know? Okay. Next discussion item is the clerk office space. It's my understanding, you said that the clerk doesn't have an office in the building. That she, I know with Janelle, we were doing more of a hybrid at home. But when she does come into the office, we've been told she doesn't have an office space. With the new clerk coming on board, we've decided that she needs to have an office here. So how can we solve this?
Well, actually, right now, I think it's an easy fix.
Okay.
Because we have, we currently have an open space upstairs. So we did move Dr. Pass, moved from downstairs to upstairs just so she's more accessible. So we have, there's a nice office space, an actual office space downstairs that's currently available. And I would agree with you that it, it does help to have the clerk in the district office so that as we're kind of, things are coming out, like that you can have easier access for discussion about potential board agenda items and getting the, the documents submitted and just having face-to-face conversations. So we can definitely make that work.
Input from anyone?
Sounds good to me.
Thanks, Dan.
What do you think, Anna?
I just don't like anybody having to be in that basement. I understand that it's space. When space is limited, you do what you have to do. I just... I want it, if, if they're gonna be downstairs, it needs to be a space, not shoved in a closet with a bunch of other boxes and other materials and stuff.
It's a very nice office space.
It's freshly been paved.
And it's not a closet.
Okay.
And nor is it putting them in that conference room downstairs where other people would be using it. It's actually going to be their office space.
Okay.
A door and their space.
Okay.
So are we moving the clerk back to full-time within the building? Or are we still keeping it hybrid with flexibility? I mean, if we had a specific, like, you're at the district office Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and you can flex Tuesday, Thursday and be at home? Or, I mean, being down?
I, I would think it would be appropriate for the district, for the district clerk, the board's clerk, to be in the district office routinely so that we can say that. Somebody used to come in and see where their office hours are and the clerk is there.
Yep. I agree with that.
So is that Monday through Friday?
I think if they have a space and they have their own space and they are, yeah, I think. I guess what's the drawback to having them here working?
More interruption.
Here versus at home? I guess it depends on your home situation.
Yes, right, yes, right. More people, more interruption. And when you're at home though, you can have more distraction just because you're not obligated to the employer. I mean, you are, but you're not, so...
I mean, either way, I guess whoever gets the job done, I'm fine with that. As long as we don't end up in the same situations we've had in the past where this big blurry line happens and it becomes the district's clerk and the board scrambling for the clerk's attention to get our work done.
Right.
You know?
Well, and maybe being downstairs away from everything that's happening upstairs is maybe a, a good thing in that respect.
Dr. Pass, were you interrupted a lot when you were downstairs?
Never, not a lot. That's actually why we moved her upstairs. We did now half the time that she was in the building and so... We may have quietly walked down the stairs.
Fair enough.
Good.
Okay. Uh, next item of discussion is the board norms and protocols. We need to get this resolved. I mean, the year, the academic year is already almost over. And we're still nowhere, where we need to be to having norms and protocols.
Well, I, I think we have a lot of norms and protocols and other policies.
Okay.
And I just had too much real work going, my other job going on, to put all the documents up here that I came across that, you know, just brings all of those policies. Basically, the trustees' duties, you know, when we're gonna meet, how does this happen, blah, 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 all that kind of stuff. So I, I did do some research.
Okay.
You know, to give us an idea. I just couldn't make the deadline to get the documentation attached. But most of it, we already have in policy. It's just make it a document called "Norms and Protocols"
Okay.
and put it in all in one spot. But I do agree that we need to do, maybe I guess I can try and do a Google Doc thing or whatever and share it out to everybody and, you know, do a brain dump on it and handle it that way. Cause I don't think everybody wants to have a meeting and get in and discuss it if they work on the documentation.
I'm kind of getting me out.
But I just didn't want us to lose sight of it. I think our agenda, we need some kind of running old business or, you know, some, somehow that we don't lose track of all these. We have something that stays on.
Right, well, there is unfinished business. It was removed off the last agenda. And I kind of entrust the clerk to, to keep a rolling tab. And Janelle's done a really good job. But at the last meeting or two, it was, well, there wasn't anything left. So it got removed because I'm like, let's get whatever off the agenda that we don't have to, you know, right, placeholders if there's no information.
Right.
But there is an unfinished, cause that was one thing that I did add, was unfinished business. Because too much was like, okay, we need to get back to that and it was lost in space. So, so that is there and it is the clerk's responsibility to keep that updated and rolling for us so that we're always aware of what we've got going on or need to get going on, so... Okay, is there anything else we need to have discussion on? So just going to the norms and protocols, you're gonna shoot it out and shoot what you've found out to all.
Right, well, I'll, yeah, I'll put it in our board drive thing and boost in everybody those lovely links that everybody loves so much to follow.
Sweet.
The treasure hunt, is that what you call it?
That's what I call it.
Okay, is there anything else we need to have discussion on at this moment?
I have a question.
Okay.
On the calendar, the board's calendar, there's in the second week of, well, I guess it's technically the first week of April, it says survey for superintendent evaluation. What is that? Yeah, so if you go to the board's calendar.
Yeah, I think.
April 3rd through the 9th, this whole week has a block that says survey for superintendent evaluation.
What one she sends out, do you think so?
I don't know what it is.
Oh.
And it's on our calendar, and I was like, are we supposed to be doing something? Or what is that for?
Is that her annual survey that she sends out to have all the patrons?
Oh, maybe.
Oh, maybe her. Says we need, we need access to the notes, and Janelle made the appointment. So do you recall why you made the appointment, Janelle? You put it on the calendar for us.
Off the top of my head, no, no, I do not recall.
Okay, if you click the purple link, there's a section for notes, and I think probably they're your notes. No, I could be wrong, they're not her notes?
No, I think it's just notes for the happen, the event. So if you want to take notes for the event, that's what that is. And if there's any action items or, it's actually for a meeting agenda, basically, is what it is.
Okay.
And that might have got put there, because I think I clicked it trying to figure out what it was.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Oh, the purple does that by default. Okay, so maybe that's what that is, then, is just a reminder that, I didn't know she did a superintendent survey.
Yeah, I don't know about that either, because she's already done her 360s, correct?
And we've gotten that information.
And it's not showing up on Dr. Meyer's calendar, it's only showing up on the board.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's weird.
All right, so anyways, the other thing was, I mean, unless there's any more discussion, I just have.
A few things I want to run through.
In the board update that Dr. Meyer, this last one that she sent, there were some documents in there addressing things that we spoke about at a public meeting. Let me open my link here so I can see what they are. But I think those documents, when those, somehow they need to get back to the public that here's the answer.
Right.
You know, whether, you know, whatever they were, and I can't remember what all of them were, but there were.
Well, there's the preliminary timeline for the LHS head football coach. There's the enrollment report by school, there's the drug testing, which I, yeah. I thought, because this is the first drug testing reporting we've had this year.
She, I submitted the fall season drug testing, and I'm pretty sure she put that in the board update in the fall. We're doing it three times a year, once for each season.
Okay. Yeah, because I thought that we had cut it back to just making it a one-and-done deal.
Yeah, so there'll be one more coming near way. I have Lakeland High School's testing and waiting for Timberlake's for the spring sports.
Okay, okay.
Anyways, those things just sort of, I appreciate that we're getting the information, but that the public's not seeing the follow-up to the questions or the discussion that we had at the meeting. So somehow we need to get that, I don't know, on the agenda or somewhere out there where the public can say, hey, see, hey, here's the answer to it. The other thing I thought was good information to share with the public, because I don't know it. And, you know, maybe not every line item needs to be shared, but Mr. Wallace shares the work order completion, and then Dr. Meyer shares it with the board, so we can see what's been done. But there again, the public doesn't know what's been done. Now, do they need to know that we ordered 100 bags of, you know, salt for the ice? No, I don't think so. But, you know, that they're building the maintenance part of the buildings, you know? And then the other thing I was happy to see, I don't know if anybody thought a chance to look at that, but the information that Carrie, and I probably butcher her last name, Pat Ked.
Quet.
Pat Quet, yeah, the career college advisor at Lakeland High School, shared all the numbers of Lakeland. And I just thought it was just another testament that the board voting to keep the schools open beyond all the pushback, because we beat every number on that sheet that she submitted in comparison to the prior year. So had we not have been open, who knows where those numbers would be. So I thought that was really cool to see, sort of accolade, you know? Here's why kids need to be in school, you know? Here's why, especially at the high school level, you know? It does so much for them and everything they were able to participate in or to. Eighty-four percent of the seniors had post-secondary plans. It was up 10% from the prior year. The prior year, it was only 74%. So anyways, I thought those were great.
Brian, has Timberlake gotten their quote on bleachers?
Yes.
Oh, that's what was.
No, we got LHS's quote, but we don't have Timberlake.
And LHS's quote is for brand-new bleachers, it's not for moving the other bleachers downstairs. That's what's requested.
Yeah, and those are one of the documents I was thinking about, that somehow we needed to come back on an agenda so everybody knew.
So, yeah, so for the, for the bleacher quotes, the company that gave a quote to Timberlake High School a year or so ago, came back out, they are requoting Timberlake High School. They also went up to Lakeland High School and measured, so they could do a quote also. And I also asked them to go to Lakeland Junior High to give a quote.
Oh, okay.
Bleachers are.
Those are nice.
They're, it's all, they're solid, you can fall through them. It's, you know, it's old school. So the company that gave, gave us a quote for, that we did receive for Lakeland High School is the company that did the original install of the bleachers when they redid the gym.
Okay.
So that's who Trent reached out to. So I've asked them to give me a quote on all three tubes, so we'll have two quotes. They did get back to us on moving the bleachers from the auxiliary up above to below, and says that they can't do that. And one, they, just as a general, they had, those are, that's a 10-row bleachers, which is too high for the auxiliary gym. The auxiliary gym's only going to have four, five, six rows. I mean, it would extend it to the court.
Right.
Second, so they can't do that, and then if you had to chop them, they said, we're not going to.
Yeah, you're telling these guys.
The other thing, too, that, you know, not that I don't think you didn't realize is that those are reverse folding bleachers, so they, and you need forward, you need the bleachers to pull out from the lowest fold, but those top ones, you know, they're sort of backwards, so they can't reverse engineer it. So move in, they just said, you know, really, just, it's best to keep them there. And they provided a quote, they're going to give me an updated quote, because of all the prices, and then I'm going to give them specifications for the other gyms, and we should have the two quotes, and then go from there. There's another company that I contacted to try to get three purchasing guidelines at this level for each one. You try to get three informal quotes that we're doing, but they haven't responded. So that's also okay, because if they don't respond, well, then you did your due diligence, and we'll get the quotes. See, I think these are the two major companies that are doing bleachers.
Well, since you threw Lakeland Middle School in there, which I think is, was prudent, when was the last time those bleachers were looked at or redone or put in?
I don't know, I mean, they're old, they, they don't get the use of those, I mean, they get a little bit. I mean, we could certainly do that, it would be, you know, a couple rows, two or three rows.
No, I know, but I'm just wondering, because Park and Rec uses, what they used to, and assuming they still do, uses that gymnasium significantly, if there could be some collaboration with Park and Rec to maybe even consider that. Because if, if there's buying power, you know, let's consider what all the options are. And if Park and Rec wants to help out, that would be great. I don't know if they.
Certainly, I, I don't, I don't think Park and Rec has that in their budget, you could ask Mr. Deuce.
You never know. You don't know unless it has.
I would be very surprised, since, since we don't charge them anything for facility use. I think it's pretty thin there. So, but, you know.
I can tell you when those bleachers were put in.
I bet you can, I bet you can, and they're pretty shaky.
Yeah, I mean, that, that gym gets a little bit of Park and Rec use, but not anywhere near what the middle school is.
Okay.
Yeah, the middle school, definitely with the kids, and then that's where Park and Rec, you know, for basketball, where they have their Saturday, their big Saturdays at, at the middle school. And then plus, you know, our, our programs too.
Our programs, yeah. Oh, right, no, I know that, I understand that.
So hopefully we'll have all that information before the April meeting. I mean, I think the first company that came out and measured will definitely, will have that probably near by the end of this week or early next week.
Okay.
The other company, we'll see how, what they can get it to those. I think they have a couple weeks, so.
Okay. Cool, thank you, Brian. Yes, thank you. I don't know what your items have been.
Okay.
Is there any input for future agenda items that maybe we entertain on the 13th?
The base program?
Oh, well, actually, we can have a discussion.
Oh.
At this moment.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I, I don't think we have to put it on the agenda to discuss it.
Go.
I just want to know how a program was stopped. I understand staffing shortages are an issue, but it wasn't, we were not even informed that there was an issue with the base program.
Right.
And that they were struggling, and they have, I had to find out through Facebook, which I was pretty livid last night finding out that we have canceled base at a couple sites without any board discussion regard, regarding the issue at all.
What, what sites did we cancel?
And Facebook.
So you have to inform me.
Yeah, Twin Lakes. Twin Lakes was shut down.
Yeah. And I believe John Brown is shutting theirs down and moving to Benny Keever. But Twin Lakes is being canceled.
So Mrs. Arnold, do you know anything about that?
I'm actually going to defer to Mr. Wallace, because he works closely with Ms. Adams, and I don't want him to speak.
Okay.
Yeah, the base program, I mean, for during COVID, especially this year, we've been staff-challenged. We, it's been a constant turnover of staff. And we, we've had times during this year up at Spirit Lake and Apple, where we closed it for a week just on a temporary, we did not have staff. There was nobody to watch the kids. So you can't, you can't have an after-school program if there's nobody. We've even had times during the year where paras have worked extra past their day, they'll say they get done at the end of the school day, where they've covered base because there's no employees. There's just, there simply is, the challenge we're seeing in that is the same challenge that daycare is across our community and across the nation are doing, is that it's a very tough position right now to fill. And right now, we, I mean, we could, we could have gone and not given any notice and said, well, this week, we have nobody, because we had to do that already at a couple sites. So right now, by consolidating the sites, we can at least have the option for John Brown to go to Benny Keever. We'll combine that, those sites, and we can shuttle them with a bus, transportation will provide that. Twin Lakes, we don't have that option.
Why not?
We don't have the staff.
You don't have the staff at Garwood?
No, we, there's limits to how many seats that we have. Garwood's full.
Okay.
Because you, we are limited by the childcare regulations, that you have to have so many adults with so many kids. So we can't just have two adults and just throw in 100 kids, that's against the rules. Can't do that.
How many kids are in the base program at Twin Lakes?
I think it was consistently 28, 30, off the top of my head. And I think the history of the base program too, you know, it hasn't always been in the district. And when it first started, it was only at Garwood for many, many years, and then it expanded. And, but this year, we don't have the staff. We've been, we hire them, they quit within a week, two weeks.
Tough kids.
I don't know, tough kids, it's a split shift schedule for some of the staff. They're working till 6:00, 7:00 o'clock, or they're coming early at 6:00 in the morning, and they're just, they're finding other opportunities and saying, well, I could, we just can't keep them right now.
We have done our best to try to pair a base position with a para position in the building so that they can have eight hours, and we can make, we try to kind of, like, somebody comes in at 6:00 in there, then they leave after eight hours, and then somebody else does the evening. And we, we're trying to link that. But we, we've even just struggled in doing that, trying to get them a full-time position and give benefits to them, trying to keep them. And in some of our buildings, we've been able to do that, but not in all.
And, and even in some of that is if they, they become our employee, and then if we have, and, you know, we've had a lot of openings for paras and things of those type of jobs. That's been a lot of openings. And so we get a base employee, they'll see that opening there, they'll go take that position. Because it's the same pay, but now instead of coming at 6:00 in the morning and leaving 6:00 at night, I get to come in at 8:30 in the morning, I leave at 2:30. And so we've tried to pair those to give eight hours, and there's some, you know, they don't want that. They'd rather work six hours, get, be benefited, than have to work another two hours and wait later. It's just, it's just really been a challenge. We're looking at different options, but right now, it's, it's, it's difficult.
When was it decided to close the Twin Lakes one and merge John Brown and Benny Keever?
We had the conversation, our recommendation was last, the final recommendation to Dr. Meyer was last week.
It's Monday.
It was Monday.
This Monday.
To communicate before spring break.
So the final meeting, so you guys have been meeting about this and aware that the problem's been existing?
Well, we've been working, you know, this is, we've been working on the challenge all year of the, of the staffing and hiring, and having people hire and then resign and hire and resign, and that's been ongoing all year.
It's just never been brought to the board that base was having significant issues. And that's, just as a board member, that's kind of concerning, that we don't know. I mean, we've, we've been told about the significant problems within the busing, but no one's ever discussed the base program. And now we've closed one, which obviously that's what's needed to be done, but we weren't even kept in the loop that, hey, this is coming down, this is coming down the, the line here. Just be aware, this is where we're going. That, to me, as a board member, is extremely frustrating, because then, you know, people are calling, complaining, and frustrated, and you have no information, no knowledge, no anything to give them.
Well, we approve everything else for base but closing it.
Yeah.
That's pretty frustrating, yeah.
Can I just add? We, Brian and I have been meeting with Ms. Adams every month and just kind of come up with solutions. And I think we have band-aided it the whole time, just trying, she has done an amazing job. I mean, she's been mornings and afternoons.
And she's one person.
She's one person, and I think, I asked her today, how many people would you save over the course of this year? And fortunate, unfortunate, it's been enough where it hasn't all been at one time. And so, you know, some of the, you know, when we've had the school closed down for a week or two, some of that was COVID, some of it was lack of staffing because of COVID, some of it was the staff left. And then we were looking at, we've tried to incentivize, and we've tried all kinds.
And then we were looking at, we've tried to incentivize and we've tried all kinds of things, but we have been able all year long to kind of keep it afloat. And then this just all, I mean, she had back-to-back-to-back-to-back people. Um, I think she's had, she's had roughly probably fifteen to twenty over the course of this year. Like she, they get hired and then they last for a little bit and then they walk away. And then, you know, she's trying to, she's covering or she's asking other people to cover. And so this was kind of all at once. She just like, you know, we met last Friday, the three of us of like trying to come up with some different options, what could we do, trying to just get out of the box. Um, we presented it to Becky, some different things, but that day when we were talking, I mean, she had another person quit. And so it, you know, we were just like, we don't really have an option at this point. Not that it can't come back if we can get additional staffing, but, um, you know, maybe she just, we just, this time and this, there, we just don't have any coverage. So, um, it, you know, so we probably should have been more, um, bringing it to the board in the sense of just what, because we have, we've been meeting with her, trying to come up with solutions and thus far, we've been able to keep it afloat. But it just all at once, we, you know, again, in that day, we were meaning to come up with, and then other two people back-to-back quit. So.
I think that I just, you guys, I, I'm sure you guys did everything we could to keep base going and to.
Right.
Help the parents and all that. The frustration was the board is that the board knew nothing. It's not that the board doesn't think that you did whatever.
Right, no, I understand.
You know, but, I mean, and I didn't know anything until tonight because I don't have Facebook. But it is frustrating that when something that large happens in the district and we have no idea about it, you know?
You definitely should not be learning about it.
Right.
From Facebook.
No, we learn a lot from Facebook. Well, I hear, I hear from everybody else that's on Facebook, I'll say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Well, it's cause they only pay thirteen forty-four, that's why. You go to Taco Bell, they're sixteen.
Yeah.
The base coordinators make more than that. And so they, and it's been the coordinators that we haven't been able to keep. They're benefited, um, we have them at seven hours. We've, we increased, um, their hourly rate last year and then again, when we did the matrix. And so it's, it's been a really difficult ride for base. And it's really hard, you know, when we're, we are trying to compete with Taco Bell and Burger King, but they can increase their prices, we can't. We're in adversity of state funding.
And they pass the increase to their customers and we, you know, we charge our customers, so.
We're also competing with ourselves, that's the reality, cause if they can get in the building with their kids' hours, they would. And we've had people pass on benefits only so they could stay, so, um, but. Oh, sorry.
No, base is paid for by the people that use it though.
Correct, we could raise the prices, we sort of have it set for this year, a lot.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify because you had stated, we, we can't charge our customers, but it's my understanding we do charge our customers.
I'm sorry.
For that program, yes.
For that program specifically, we only, so, yeah.
Right, and we get some reimbursements from the state if they qualify for that assistance.
Okay.
But I do apologize that you found out about this on Facebook. We were hoping that that wasn't gonna be the case, but, so, but.
Well, even in email communication, not just to the board. I mean, it's not for discussion, it's just informing us of what's going on.
FYI.
Yeah, and that just.
We should have.
We should be there by now, but we're not.
At the very least, we should have been notified the same time parents were notified.
Yeah.
Just, cause that rolls uphill to us when people are upset, so.
Well, thank you both for your information.
Thanks.
It is appreciated. Any further discussion on that? Okay. That being said, uh, we'll go ahead and, I'll entertain a motion.
I have, I have one other thing for, sorry, future agenda, because now we're talking about Twin Lakes, but we never hear updates on the preschool up there. We always forget that we have this pre-K, you know, um, environment that we're responsible for. So I'd like to know, like, how are we doing up there, what's the enrollment look like, what's our staffing, I mean, like, what's going on up there with the preschool?
Share that with Ms. Badger and ask her to put something together for the April thirteenth, so we're talking about.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
Just a, just a short, oh, sure.
Yes, not a long.
Sure.
It doesn't even have to be presentation. She could provide us with the information and then be here for questions.
Yeah, that, that would be perfect, yeah.
Yes, I will ask her to do that, I've been taking notes.
Thank you.
I don't typically sit in this seat, so I wanna make sure of that, I'm saying, sending the information to the right people.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, so now I will make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four two zero six one B.
Sold.
Hear your motion in a second, we need a roll call vote.
Trusty Bay?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Chagerson?
Yes.
Sheriff Johnson?
Yes.
Trusty Jones?
Yes.
Trusty Crumby?
Yes.
We are now in executive session. Okay, so we've come out of executive session, there are no, uh, actionable items. We'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting, it's eight eighteen.